Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter Erica Harriman. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 7. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company to provide a permanent construction easement for the improvement of the Riazzi Power Substation in the Central Oakland Neighborhood and a license to maintain a swath of land at the base of the hill to improve long-term stormwater control of city property in Shinley Park, which also affects the substation. Bill Number 8. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Recycling Partnership, Inc., to conduct public outreach surrounding the city's recycling program and to purchase containers for curbside residential recycling collection and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 9. Resolution vacating a portion of Rubicon Street laid out in the Elizabeth Ebbs Plan of Lots, Number 3647, from Mann Street to its northern terminus in the 19th Ward, Second Council District. Bill Number 10. Resolution amending Resolution Number 901 effective January 2011 entitled "Resolution Accepting the Dedication of Land by Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh of Parcel Number 1A Technology Drive in the Pittsburgh Technology Center Plan of Lots, Number 2, in the 4th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh for public right-of-way and highway and utility purposes, excepting the grading, paving, street lighting, curbing, traffic signals, establishment of grades, and fixing the width and position of roadways and sidewalks thereof," Council District Number 6. Bill Number 11. Resolution accepting the dedication of a portion of Little Street, Beehive Street, and Eliza Street in the S.P. 10 Hazelwood Green Specially Planned District in the 4th and 15th Ward's 5th Council District. Bill Number 12. Resolution approving the recommendation of the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Fallowfield Avenue from Hampshire Avenue to Broadway Avenue be reconstructed as a concrete roadway in accordance with Section 417.06 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 13. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to receive grant funding to support Homewood Complete Streets Planning Projects in an amount not to exceed $81,000 for this stated purpose. Councilwoman Deborah L. Gross presents Bill Number 14. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 1717 Locust Street. Bill Number 15. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 112 through 134 Borough Street Land Development Project located on Borough Street. Bill Number 16. Resolution adopting Plan Revision of the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Middle Street Triplex, 734, 738, and 742 Middle Street. Bill Number 17. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for properties located at 5305 and 5307 Home Street, Pittsburgh, 15201. Bill Number 18. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the McCartel Residential Project at 911 Pretense Way located on lots 218, 220, and 222. Bill Number 19. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 20. Resolution approving an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to extend its term of existence to a date that is 50 years from the date of the approval of the amendment to the Articles of Incorporation by the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and adding stormwater planning, management, and implementation to the purposes of the authority. Councilman Daniel Lavell presents Bill Number 6. Resolution providing for professional services agreement or existing agreements for consulting services but not limiting to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $150,000. Bill Number 21. Ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article One Administration by adding Chapter 212 Administrative Matters for Taxes and Fees. Bill Number 22. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business-Related Taxes, Chapter 214 Amusement Tax, Section 241.01, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 23. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business-Related Taxes, Chapter 253 Parking Tax, Section 253.01, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 24. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business-Related Taxes, Chapter 258 Payroll Tax, Section 258.01, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 25. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to purchase a regenerative street sweeper to assist in the ongoing removal of debris from the new bike trail at Hazelwood Green and other permeable surfaces and further providing for an agreement not to exceed $187,000 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 26. Resolution realigning a total of $8,107,000 between various accounts within the 2019 operating budget. This transfer is necessary for the 2019 close-to-meet final expenditures for fiscal year 2019. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 27. Resolution amending Resolution 663 of 2019, a resolution amending an agreement with E-Docs Technologies, LLC for licensing services and maintenance and support services for a one-year contract extension and an additional cost not to exceed $35,765.43. Bill Number 28. Resolution amending Resolution Number 146 of 2019 authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Qsend Technologies, Inc., for the purchase of constituent relationship management software services necessary for the operation of the city's 311 Response Line by extending the term for one additional year and by increasing the authorized spending amount by $56,274.75. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 29. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Bradbury located at 1130 Red Hour Street in the Central Northside Neighborhood, 22nd Ward. Bill Number 30. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as a city-county building located at 414 Grant Street in downtown 1st Ward of the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 31. Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as Pennsylvania National Bank located at 3480 Butler Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 6th Ward. And Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 32. Communication from David Honorato, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, submitting the position and salary report as of January 1, 2020. And Bill Number 33. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approvals on behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Donisha Myers and on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Keith Younger, Javon Broughton, Sean Traynor, Nick Rossi, and Bill Misko per the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting on Tuesday, January 14th, 2020. Will the Clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Ms. Lavell, Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strausberger, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, our next order of business is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record for Councilman Burgess.
Reverend Burgess presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, January 5th, 2020, to be deaconess Freddie Banks Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we... Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second. Okay, second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Proclamations approved. And Councilman Burgess has a will of counsel, but we'll wait and do that at the end of the meeting when he's...when he comes in. The next order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize, and when the red light comes on, your time is up. Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live in Hill District. I am happy that you are the president. No way Mr. Burgess should have been. This last week, did you see that when I was speaking, my three minutes and Ms. Gross, which she, I said, comes late all the time and sometimes don't come, when I approached, when I said something to her, he gonna tell me I couldn't, and I had to stop because the Sergeant of Arms was coming towards me to put me out. This is becoming the police state, but she has no right to be able to keep speaking during my three minutes. That's all I get, and she bakes $68,000. I get mad every time I think you're clowns making $68,000, each one of you. I told you before, it should be five so you could break. We don't need no nine. Half of you don't come to the meetings like you're supposed to. Now, I am upset because I was really thinking about that the school district, maybe we could get it together. Now they're asking for more taxes. No, we need to have the school taken over by the state. Do you remember when Ms. Lane was here? She paid for the city to have a parade. Do you understand? And we don't have books for our kids. Then you had when they hired Dr. Thompson, there was the agreement of $300,000 if they fired him. I told them they're gonna do it. Oh, no, because we done charged him $300,000. You know they fired that man? $300,000 because they didn't want that black man that, they were scared of the tall black man. When he went to court, you know what the...you know what the judge said? You fired him and you didn't give him reason why, so he won. He went down south, they fired him. Ms. Fink, they come and ask that big, that old dinosaur, Ms. Fink, she said he should have been fired. But what would happen, that down south, every one of them that fired him, that's about 21 of them went to jail. You understand, they went to jail because they had taken and cut the test and gave the kids the test. One A said, she told, they said, you better shut up or you gonna lose your job. She said, I still lost my job. So, you know what? As you sit, as you are citizens of the city and you become elected official, you seem to forgot where you came from, especially you. They said you got a, you were poor, you got a business now. The new man, say your name. I mean, you know his name. I'm sorry, but I am disappointed in you because with you, poor, you supposed to know how poor people suffer, especially when they can come from a foreign country and beat black women down and not get charged with, they just get the misdemeanor. Now they said that the one man that beat the black women, he beat his wife. Now you know he gonna get felony charges for his woman in the United States, but you can come and beat us black women. He almost knocked that woman's head into the, into the gas thing and you still say it's okay. Thank you, I'm gone.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Homewood and the Hill Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President, 2020. The inauguration ceremony, 6th January, 2020, in my view, Fellini-esque, Rossellini-like fusion of La Dolce Vita and Roma Cita Operta travestia, profaning our local national democracy. Every claim made January 6th to elective office for Mr. Kraus, Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Burgess, Ms. Gross, Mr. Wilson is false, a lie. Reporting it as a fact is worse than fake news. It is false anti-news. Not one of you can prove that any of the votes assigned to you by Allegheny County is linked evidentially to a specific voter. I, the Global Intelligence Society, and thousands of Pittsburghers therefore do not consider you to be the legally properly elected government of the City of Pittsburgh. You are illegitimate. Every cry made 6th January calling on God, a God supporting these secular offices is a profanation, in my view, of the US-American idea of government done without domination by religion. You and your applauders last week transgressed. You violated Amendment 1 of the US Constitution with invocation, with benediction, with priests, ministers, and an oath illegally including, quote, "So help me God." The Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article 7, Section 709, says, quote, "Every elected official shall take the following oath," again, quote inside a quote, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State and the Charter of the City and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office to the best of my ability. There is no 'so help me God.' The magistrates who did so are out of line. They should have known better, but they didn't." All of you have sworn to a false oath, not in the HRC, linking installation in a secular, nonreligious office to religion. You are illegal. To many of us, when we hear you say, "We do not permit profanity, which is debasement or vulgarization by abuse," according to the OED, claiming a vote without proof debases our democracy. What could be more profane? And calling on a generic God insults the God of Islam, people who are followers of Islam, the God of paganism, of Hinduism. Doing so to back up city offices debases the idea of separation of state and religion.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
My name is Les Ludwig. I live in Squirrel Hill, and I'm here this morning on multiple subjects. Number one, to tell the people of Iowa, this is the only way I can reach them. Hopefully, that they'll understand that there's $37 trillion in uncollected taxes, and how many of the candidates are saying they want to raise taxes. I've been saying it here in this chamber for probably a year or more, ever since I discovered the bar graph that shows that 50% or more of the electorate is not filing their tax If you take that figure and work it back in math, that's how you get $37 trillion. That could pay for almost everything in the kitchen sink. Number two, I just passed my 87th. You can go ahead and wish me a happy birthday, but I happened to run into at the library April of 2019 National Geographic Cities. Cities. Why would a company as big and prestigious as National Geographic devote an entire edition? Why? I won't be here. God willing, the City of Pittsburgh will. Are you preparing? Have you named anyone to take us into that period 50 years from now? I doubt it. You're too narrow-minded. Number three, government is based on the will of the public, the electorate, and if you go to Mike Doyle's office and you say, "Hey, I can show you where there's millions, trillions of dollars. Can I get a little piece? Can I be a consultant?" And the answer is, "Well, you gotta give us the idea so that we can present it to a proper department to see if they're interested." Huh? That means you get wiped out day one because you're giving them the information upfront. There's no avenue, direct avenue, to be able to make a contribution. I accidentally did it with management, management budget services, a public law of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig, and happy birthday. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Aaron Arnold from Highland Park. I'm the Executive Director, Prevention Point Pittsburgh. Was hoping to have the will of council heard before so I could thank you all for hearing it at this point, but look forward to it coming later in the meeting. Just wanted to say that it's coming up on a year of us having the site opened in Overbrook, which has been going fantastic. We look forward to presenting our data to the Allegheny County Health Department in about a month or two. The work is not over. We are having some progress in reducing overdose fatalities, but the data that we're seeing in the medical system shows that unsterile injection is continuing. People don't have access to sterile injection equipment and are spreading bacterial and viral infections, and so we continue to see the need for more sites in different parts of the city. We're grateful that the Homewood site will be our fifth and that we'll have a site available five days a week for individuals. Hopefully eventually we'll be able to say we're open seven days a week. I also just wanted to comment that the site in Homewood is particularly meaningful to us. Some of you may remember our late case manager, Ron Johnson, who served for many years and was honored by this body in December of 2017 with a proclamation acknowledging the thousands of people he got into recovery by working at the Needle Exchange Program. He passed away very unexpectedly from a sepsis infection in January of 2018, and so it was a longtime dream of his to have a site in Homewood. I think every time we talked, he brought it up, and so we feel very honored to be fulfilling his wish and bringing this public health service to a neighborhood where there is great need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Dancing all, bonheur. I'm here to talk about stop signs. This city has gone crazy with stop signs. Instead of enforcing law, you put the burden, you put the burden on people to debate a law. Everywhere there's any kind of problem, you stick up a stop sign. Now you just put one over Shell Street or Knox Avenue, there's maybe for two hours a day when schools coming in and going out, you might need that stop sign, but the other 22 hours of the day, it's a complete waste of time for drivers. On my, on my street, on my neighborhood of Camfield and Coniston, there are at least seven illegal stop signs. Now, the Pennsylvania says on multi-way stop control at intersections, there has to be an engineering and traffic study done before a stop sign is installed. Now, I come home from work one day into bottom of, at the bottom of Camfield Street with Dry Cove, there's a three-way stop sign put in. Now, I seen no traffic study before that. I seen no coming to the neighbors and saying, "Do you think you need this and all that?" The information I got is one lady down at the corner waits for the bus in the morning, complained about people coming around the corner. So, there we go, a three-way stop sign. They are illegal stop signs. Is this another... Is this another rule that we just bypass, like the one you're allowed to park on sidewalks, anywhere you want, blocks the sidewalks? Who decides what rules we follow in this city? I am tired of driving around, stopping at stop signs, put the brakes on instead of the gas when the lights start changing, and I have to pay for these people that ain't paying for the stop, take their license. I mean, I'm tired of it. And Mr. Kraus, two times I've called 311 about a dead tree at the bottom of Osmond Street. I've talked to Mr. Kraus's office. I've talked to the Department of Forestry. There's a dead tree down there, but all the small limbs about falling down. Now, you roll your eyes, but one of these days, one of these big trees, one of these big limbs in this tree is gonna kind of fall on somebody, and I guarantee if I know who it is, I'm gonna go to a lawyer with the information I have, the times I reported it to the city. Now, something needs to be done about this for someone gets hurt.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Council. My name's David Demko, and I'm the Assistant Director of Scenic Pittsburgh. First of all, I'd like to welcome Councilman Bobby Wilson to the show. Bobby, I commend your courage, and I'd also like to congratulate Councilwoman Kail Smith, or should I say President? Kail Smith, I wish she was a real president, but I digress. So, as you know, I'm with Scenic Pittsburgh. I were opposed to billboards. We don't like billboards. We fight billboards, and we like it, and you know that. Lately, we have a new pet peeve, and like billboards, it's something that's been on the landscape for so long that we just look past it, and that happens to be trash. And I'm not talking just regular litter. I'm talking about dumps. I'm talking about dumps everywhere in the city, in our so-called green spaces. If you drive up 279 or you drive out the Parkway, right now with the leaves are down and you look on the sloped properties, you'll see pickup truckloads of garbage, televisions, construction debris, computers, tires. So, this is a disaster. Two things we have to do. One, we have to clean it up. We have to figure out somehow to clean it up, clean up our mess. Second of all, we have to address exactly how we handle our refuse in the city, our recycling programs and that. You know, fortunately, we already have the tools to do this. We have a plan. We have the Roadmap to Zero Waste, which was adopted here by City Council not that long ago. We have a commission. We have the Clean Pittsburgh Commission to do the research and make recommendations on whatever we decide to do about these issues. We have a method. We have the One PGH Plan that details how we handle public-private partnerships, and we have partners. We have the nonprofits that are funded by the foundation, and they're doing a great job. They're focused on this. We have people with advanced degrees in environmental sciences and urban planning. They're a great resource, and the foundations fund them, and we need to take advantage of them. How much is this all gonna cost? It's gonna cost a lot of money over many years, but, you know, this is Pittsburgh. If we want to remain a leader in sustainability, if we want to just actually walk the walk instead of talk the talk, we have to do this. Our goal should be, and I say this in all seriousness, our goal should be to be the cleanest city in the nation, and that's what I'd like to see, our New Year's resolution. And if you don't believe me, I'll bring in Boris Weinstein to convince you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to presentation of papers. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Oh, wait, before we do that part, can we do, Reverend, can we do your will of council?
Sure.
Yeah, let's do that first.
I hope.
Reverend Burgess presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the location for the Prevention Point Pittsburgh Operate a Needle Exchange Program at 7240 Frankstown Avenue.
Can we have, motion to approve, second?
Second.
Reverend, do you have something you want to say? No? Anyone else wishing to speak? So, no? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Approved. Now, we'll move on to the presentation of papers, and we'll start with Reverend Burgess, the Chair of Urban Recreations.
Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend Burgess.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 0034, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the City Code at Title 1, Administrative Article 11, Human Resources, Chapter 197, Code of Conduct, by adding a new section entitled 197.21, hateful activities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, Councilman Coghill, Chair of Department of Public Works.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 0008, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Recycling Partnership, Inc., to Conduct Public Outreach Surrounding the City's Recycling Program, and to Purchase Containers for Curbside Residential Recycling Collection, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $500,000. Bill Number 0009, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Rubicon Street, Laid Out in the Elizabeth Ebb's Plan of Lots 3647, from Mann Street to its Northern Terminus in the 19th Ward, Second Council District. Bill Number 10, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 901, Accepting the Dedication by the URA of Parcel Number 1A, Technology Drive, in the Pittsburgh Technology Center Plan of Lots Number 2 in the 4th Ward, by Accepting the Adjustments to the Rightofway as shown in Revised Parcel Number 1A, Council District 6. Bill Number 11, Resolution Accepting the Dedication of a Portion of Lytle Street, Beehive, and Eliza Street in the SP 10, Hazelwood Green, the specially planned district in the 4th and 15th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill Number 12, Resolution Approving the Recommendation of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, that Fallow Field Avenue from Hampshire Avenue to Broadway Avenue be reconstructed as a concrete roadway in accordance with Section 1441706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 13, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements with the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County to Receive Grant Funding to Support Homewood Complete Streets Planning Project in an Amount of $81,000.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have Councilwoman Gross, the Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 14, Resolution Adopting Plan Revisions to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 717 Locust Street. Bill Number 15, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 112134 Bureau Street Land Development Project. Bill Number 16, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Middle Street Triplex, 734, 738, and 742 Middle Street. Bill Number 17, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Properties Located at 5305 and 5307 Holmes Street, Submitted by K.C.L. Slaughter. Bill Number 18, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the McGardo Residential Project 911 Pretense Way. Bill Number 19, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 20, Resolution Approving an Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to Extend its Term of Existence to a Date that is 50 years from the date of the Approval of the Amendment to Articles of Incorporation by the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adding stormwater planning, management, and implementation to the purposes of the authority. Bill Number 35, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Intermunicipal Transfer of Liquor License from Bell Puck, Inc., to the Applicant Known 950 Penn LLC, also known as Known 950 Penn LLC.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
How'd it happen? Is it you? Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 6, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement for Existing Agreement for Consulting Services but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000. Bill Number 21, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code at Title 2, Fiscal Article 1, Administration, by Adding Chapter 212, Administrative Matters for Taxes and Fees. Bill Number 22, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title 2, Fiscal Article 7, Business Related Taxes, Amusement Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 23, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title 2, Fiscal Article 7, Business Related Taxes, Parking Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 24, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code at Title 2, Fiscal Article 7, Business Related Taxes, Chapter 258, Payroll Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code. Bill Number 25, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Richard King Mellon Foundation to Purchase a Regenerative Street Sweeper to Assist in the Ongoing Removal of Bree from the New Bike Trail at Hazelwood Green and Other Preminable Surfaces, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $187,000. Bill Number 26, Resolution Realigning a Total of $8,107,000 between Various Accounts Within the 2019 Operating Budget. This Transfer is Necessary for the 2019 Close to Meet Final Expenditures for Fiscal Year 2019.
Councilman Lavelle.
Motion to waive rule eight on Bill 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any conversation, I should have asked, any conversation? We'll have it appear on tomorrow's agenda. Motion passed. And then, we have Councilman O'Connor, the Chair of Public Safety Services.
Do you have papers, Madam President?
So, I have a note here that says waive rule eight under your committee.
I don't have any papers.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 27, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 663, With E-DOP Technologies for Licensing Services and Maintenance and Support Services for a One-Year Contract Extension at an Additional Cost Not to Exceed $35,765.43. Bill Number 28, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 146, Which Authorizes the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Q-SIN Technologies, Inc., by Extending the Term for One Additional Year and by Increasing the Authorized Spending Amount by $56,274.75.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President.
Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you. That's your first paper, so I feel like we should snap a photo.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 29, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure, known as the Bradbury, located at 1130 Red Door Street in the Central North Side Neighborhood, 22nd Ward. Bill Number 30, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure, known as the City-County Building, 414 Grant Street in the 1st Ward of the city. Bill Number 31, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure, known as Pennsylvania National Bank, located at 3480 Butler Street in the Lawrenceville Neighborhood, 6th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I have two communications, the Position and Salary Report for Parking Authority and Acting Pay Approvals. Okay.
Council President Kail Smith presents Bill Number 32, Communication from David Orietour, Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Parking Authority, Submitting the Position and Salary Report as of January 1st, 2020. Bill Number 33, Communication from Kevin Pallas, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approvals on behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Dornisha Myers, and on behalf of the Department of Public Works for Keith Younger, Javon Brighton, Sean Traynor, Nick Rossi, and Bill Miss Ico by the Acting Pay Policy revised in June 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Motion to move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes. And now, we'll move on to the next order of business. Is there any final action? Sorry, any unfinished business before council? Seeing no unfinished business, we'll move on to final action, and there being no final action for any of the bills on today's agenda, we'll move on to motions and resolutions. Do any of the members have anything they'd like to say?
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
I want to say thank you for making it look so easy all these years. It's really not. So, thank you, and I really want to welcome back the members, and especially those who just were sworn in, and I want to welcome Councilman Wilson to the table. It's good to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. And so, with that said, we have a briefing scheduled this afternoon with sessions at 1:30 and 2:15 relative to Bills 21, 22, 23, and 24 that were introduced in councils, in council this morning. Also, due to the Martin Luther King Holiday next week, council and clerk offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th. You can also find additional information about city services and garbage collection, which will be delayed one day, on the city websites and all their social media outlets. Can we have a motion to excuse absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
To move.
No absent members? So, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.